So I'd like to call the January 9th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting Order at 6:06 PM. And if we can all stand, I'm gonna have Joe Wigginton lead us in our invocation, and then Chris Parker's gonna lead us in our pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Hallelujah, Lord. Thank you so much for your love and your blessings. Oh, God, we're blessed to live in Pickens County with all the wonders that you pour out on us. The good workers, our school is just seems like it's going in the right direction. Thank you for being God over us and helping us and leading our way. We ask you tonight to bless this meeting, bless the ones that are here. Help us continue to conduct ourselves the way we should. And we're just grateful to you, Lord, for all you do. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Please have a pledge.
Blood allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to thank our greeters at tonight's meeting. We have Miranda Combs, our principal from Jasper Middle School, and Stephen Hunter, our principal at Harmony Elementary. Thank you. All right, the next items are approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Go ahead.
Joe Wigginton?
I'll second.
Sue Finley? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, the agenda is approved. I'm gonna now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Thomas for the election of the 2025 Board Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our first regular meeting in January, and this is when we hold elections for the Chair and the Vice Chair. And I'm gonna read our board policy that states this. Board Policy, BBA, states the Pickens County Board of Education shall elect by majority vote a chairperson and vice chairperson annually at the first meeting of the board each calendar year. Each such officer shall hold office until their successor has been elected. And so at this time, Board, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for school board chairperson for 2025.
Yes, sir. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Amy Gibson to be the Chair for this upcoming year.
Okay, Amy Gibson has been nominated for the 2025 Board Chair. Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations for the 2025 Board Chair position?
So move.
So move. Mr. Lau? Second, do I hear a second? Mr. Bartra? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. So we had four yes, zero no, one abstention. I'm proud to say that Amy Gibson has been elected to serve as the Pickens County Board of Education Chair for the year 2025. I will now turn the meeting over to our newly elected Chair, Ms. Gibson.
Who doesn't have a pen? All right, let's see. Next on the agenda is the selection of school board vice chair for 2025. Would like to open the floor for nominations for school board vice chair for 2025.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Joe Wigginton.
Are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations for the 2025 Board Vice Chair position?
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Joe? All right, Joe Wigginton has been elected to serve as the Pickens County Board of Education Vice Chair for the year 2025. All right, Dr. Thomas, would you introduce the recognition for tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I will. So at this time, we'll be celebrating our Dragon Awards. This is in honor of teachers, support staff members, and students from all grade levels and disciplines who are making a difference in our school district. As a reminder, there are two Dragon Award winners each month, and you earn this distinction by being nominated. Anyone can nominate, and these nominations are reviewed by our HR department and communications team who selects the recipients. This month, we're recognizing one of our food service people and a teacher from Pickens High School. At this time, Mr. Chris Parker, our Assistant Superintendent, will read the nominations for our Dragon Award recipients.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. We have two to recognize tonight. The first, we're gonna recognize our food service manager at Tate. Before we do, I wanna say that we set the all-time record for nominations for Gina. So more people. Yeah, I had to quit printing paper. So many people sent quotes. So I mean, I mean that. I'll give them to you, but I can't read all of them. But a lot of people wanted you to be here tonight. So we got Ms. Gina Piles. Come on up, Gina. I'm gonna read a little something about you while you come up. She goes above and beyond to her employees and the students. She puts all her love and heart into it. She's a wonderful person. Another one said, "Ms. Gina's constantly going above and beyond for the staff and children here at Tate." That was Wendy that said that. Thank you, Wendy. We have, "Ms. Gina's the most dedicated, positive, and hard-working person I have ever been around." She loves the kids and her job. She shows this every day. This is one of the longest-tenured teachers at Tate that said that. So, and a bunch more of Ms. Gina. I can't read them all because we gotta go to basketball.
It takes them all. It takes everybody.
We thank you very much for all you do. So Ms. Gina Piles. I think twenty-something people, Ms. Gina, had something nice to say because they sent on their own. And I've lived forty-six years and twenty people combined. But next up, no pressure, Natalie, but you're next. We have Ms. Natalie Cochrane. Ours is a little different. So hold on a second now because I wanna explain what we did. We gave her the award, but we changed the category because we had something to GLICE. We said this last month. GLICE is Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement. They have something called Hidden Heroes, and people can nominate people across the state. There's all these people that can vote, and if you finish in the first or second in your region, you win. And then they have something called Honorable Mention. And so when I was coach football, honorable mention meant like after that, like first place, second place, honorable mention. But that's not what this is. They actually took the people that have won this award before. They went through all the nominations for the whole state, and they picked out two people that they thought should win. And so they need a new name that should not be called honorable mention. But Natalie has won that, which I think is more prestigious than just people clicking on the computer. The people who have won this award previously thought her resume and biography was the most impressive. So come on up, Natalie. I'll read a little bit about it. We have four employees nominated for this, but Natalie got the honorable mention award, which was chosen by previous winners based on these criteria. The lasting impact they have on their students, two, a unique inspiring quality they possess, and three, their commitment in shaping the future of our school community. So somebody read those three things and picked you over. We're talking, I mean, a lot of people. Yeah, so congratulations, Natalie. Very good.
Dr. Thomas, I will turn the meeting over to you for the Superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we want to bring up Dr. Abby May, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And Dr. May has a little report for us on student achievement. At this time, actually, I'm trying to apologize.
Good that you get to talk down there.
Wow. I clear a room.
Not personal. We're going to the ballgame.
Yeah, go to the ballgame. I'm not gonna take it personally. It's really exciting news. They were gonna miss out on it. So, you know, totally fine. Well, thank you and Happy New Year. I wanted to just give you an update on where we are in curriculum and instruction. As always, we're focusing on that student achievement and success. One of the areas I wanted to highlight because we have just kind of incorporated it into our new strategic plan is that early literacy piece. And with the adoption of Benchmark and really implementing DIBBLES as our benchmarker, that's our, I guess, it's our way to address and to assess students in early literacy. So it does a lot of phonological things. It's looking at spelling, reading comprehension, word knowledge, those things. And so we actually implemented it the middle of the year last year, and then we have full implementation, so starting with the beginning of the year this year. And some highlights, in kindergarten, we had a decrease of students well below the benchmark by sixteen percent. So from beginning of the year to middle of the year, we're moving that many of our students. And then that in turn resulted in a sixteen percent growth in our students at benchmark. And it's really important to catch them early. We wanna make sure that we get them before they get to that third, fourth, fifth, sixth level. So this is a huge testament to what our teachers are doing, our coaches, our principals and assistant principals in really sticking to our programmatic things. In addition, in first grade, we had a decrease of seven percent for those below benchmark. At benchmark, we increased three percent, and above benchmark is also three percent. So it's important to note that at the mid-year and end of year, it is a moving target. So it is expecting that there is growth. So that is even more impactful to know that we've moved that target and we're continuing to see that growth. And another great highlight is that in fourth grade, that above benchmark moved up seventeen percent. So that is really, we wanna catch those kiddos before they end up really far behind and feeling like they're stressed with their reading levels. So again, another huge testament to our schools and our teachers. We have some great reports out of our EOCs taken at the semester at the high school. So just put the data up here, but important highlights, distinguished, so moving that students to that Level Four an increase of two percent, our developing increased by thirteen percent. So those students still earn for us in CCRPI. It's a good, getting those students up is huge. And then our beginners decreased by thirteen percent. So again, we're looking at those literacy scores and that literature. We're really putting the focus on getting students at that proficient and, of course, distinguished level. Biology, Mr. Combs is especially proud of this. That biology team has worked incredibly hard this year. So distinguished, we had an increase of three percent. And as a former biology teacher, I can tell you it's tough to get them at Level Four at all levels, so that's huge. Our proficient, an increase of twelve percent. And then our developing went down by ten percent, meaning that we're moving them into those upper tiers, which is huge. And last is U.S. history. We did see an increase in the distinguished of five percent. So again, we're moving those students. A lot of history's gonna depend on that reading, so we're hoping to kind of continue to see those as we focus on the adolescent literacy and what our students need to be reading at grade level. So that is it for me. Any questions? You're welcome. Good? Did I do good? Okay.
This is great.
Great news, right?
I wonder if they're moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. May. At this time, we will call up Amy Smith, our Chief Financial Officer, for a financial update.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. As part of our strategic planning goal for operational organizational effectiveness, we'll review the monthly financial reports. As you can see, Ms. Martha has pulled up our general fund. So revenue collected through the end of December 2024 was sixty point nine six percent of our budgeted revenue, and we have spent thirty-seven point three percent of our budgeted expenditures for the month. Our consolidation of funds, this is that blend of federal monies and local monies. This reflects our expenditures and transfers made through the end of November. This is mostly instructional money. This is directly schooled instructional money for the most part. Always like to let y'all, remind you that we have no debt.
That's a big one.
That's a big one. Capital outlay, splotch revenue for the month of December 2024 was eight hundred one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. We had donations of sixty-five thousand. Hurrah! That is for a playground project at Tate Elementary from Huber, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Stevens? And we have another donation that came in too for twenty thousand, so we're at eighty-five thousand toward that project. So hurrah, thank you to our local community for supporting our schools in this manner. Playground equipment, I know, might seem like a small thing, but eighty-five thousand won't complete the whole project. So we do have a portion we will be paying to. We'll bring that to you at a later date. But we are very proud, very pleased to accept these donations, and we will honor the request to do that playground project for Tate Elementary. I got sidetracked. I was excited about that. Interest earned for the month was seven hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Expenditures totaled eight hundred forty-three thousand one hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, which brought our month-end E-Loss balance, I say splotch sometimes, but it is actually E-Loss, to eight million nine hundred fifty thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and three cents. Our special revenue fund, which is our school food and federal revenues, we've collected forty-seven point three nine percent of our budgeted revenue and expended forty-seven point seven eight percent of our budgeted expenditure. As you can see, we've pulled just as much money out of that as we can. That is probably our record as close as we can get. There's a three-week delay between those processes. So very pleased we ended the year with most of those collections even. Do y'all have any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, at this time, we will call up Mr. Chris Parker, our Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Parker's gonna give us a couple of updates on operations and construction. Specifically, we've got a GMP to approve as well as approval of a change order, a couple of projects, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Like Amy said, a part of Goal Area Four relates to operational effectiveness. Talk to you about open construction projects as needed and try to monthly update you. We currently have projects going on at the high school, but with the track and the grow-up barn that the guys approved previously, those projects are beginning. We'll have more updates for those in the coming months. But today, we've got two different items on the agenda when you get to action items. One is the really good kind. We're finishing the project. We're closing it out, and we're, lack the better, we're getting money back. We're under the budget, and we have to get you all to approve it because you approved a certain budget, and this is less. So that's a good, that's a change order. So there's two types of change orders. This is the good kind, right? So this is on the fieldhouse project that's completely finished. We finished all the, everything we needed for that. And we are sixty-three thousand, sixty-three thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars less than what we had agreed to pay for that. And so we need you all to approve that as our final action for that project, and we'll close that project. As one thing closes, another one opens. We have our GMP for the high school renovation. And I do wanna take a minute, and I'll answer any questions you have, to talk about high school renovation. This is a massive project, okay? And so, you know, sometimes when we do projects that are on the outside of the school, like a Hag Building or something like that, we can do some of that at the same time. What this is, is a remodel of the high school, for anybody that's not aware. And paint, floor, walls, ceilings, bathrooms, everything. We did this at Junior High about four or five years ago. And so this'll be the same kind of thing, but in the high school, it's our biggest building, not even close, and they have eight weeks, right? So I do want you to know, and this is a massive project, and it will be a big deal on the high school campus, you know, from the day after graduation to the day we come back, every day. On the weekends, late in the evening, they'll be doing some prep work in winter break and fall break, or winter break and spring break if you guys approve this. So we're very organized on this. We have several meetings. The high school administration's been involved. You know, it's a logistical thing. Gotta get everything out of that building, put everything back in, do all that, and we only got eight weeks. So bear with us, as there will be some things in the public. You know, the high school never closes. It's different than when we renovated elementary school. And a lot of times in the summer, there may not be a lot going on, you know, and you can't just get in there. But the high school never really closes. There's something there every day, all year. And it will be some minor inconveniences. But if you've been at a high school and you drive down the hill, you know, it's a beautiful place. But the inside needs some work. It's supposed to be about every twenty years you do this per the state reg. Well, that building was built in nineteen ninety-seven, right? So you're looking at twenty-seven years, twenty-eight years. So we're a little past when we really should be putting more paint on the walls and redoing bathrooms. So we're really excited about this, and we're excited for you to approve this and ask any questions for this GMP for the guaranteed maximum price, what that means of what it'll be. And then if it's less, which it will be, we'll make it less, I promise. Then we'll come back and tell you the change order for less, right? But I wanna answer any questions you may have about that GMP because obviously here in a minute, you're gonna just vote. So if you have any questions, please ask. But we are really excited about this project, really excited to get in some classrooms and renovate some classrooms, and want Dr. May's people to have the best learning environment they can have. Our high school's gonna have that. It just may be on August 1st, like all the way to August 1st. So bear with us. You guys have any questions?
If we can play this summer.
There'll be, well, yeah, there's really three parts to this. We actually started last year, right? This is the part we're gonna see. I think you guys remember last year, I said several times to you, we're doing a lot of work, but there's things you don't see. This summer is gonna be a lot of things you see, like I mentioned. And so there will be the area that is where the gym is, where we're playing basketball right now. The area, there's a ninth-grade wing is what they call it, which is in the back of the front. Those two buildings were built not in nineteen ninety-seven, right? One was in two thousand, I think, nine, and one was maybe two thousand and eleven. And so those will be next summer. We're still not waiting twenty years. But next summer, but because we couldn't get the entire building. So anything that was built in nineteen ninety-seven and eight, that time period, will be renovated this summer. That's, I think it's around seventy-five or eighty percent of the building. But the gym, the newer gym, that area where there's arts, there's a gym and a PHC, that will be a project we would bring to the third phase of this. But that is in this GMP. It just won't get done this summer. It'll get done in the next summer. And we can get you a timeline. I think we showed you a timeline on that. But that is in this cause. So what you're approving tonight is the cause for the entire building, okay? We're just gonna get eighty percent of it done this summer, twenty percent next summer. Does that make sense? What were you gonna say there?
Well, that was part of my question, but the other part, I think, can you tell us if all the restrooms will be redone too, right?
It is my understanding that every restroom would be renovated this summer. That was out of a request of the principal, plus I know I think the board had that too, but the principal was pretty adamant they wanted to do the restrooms first. So we involved the administration through this whole process, and they kind of selected the areas that would go first. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, thank you very much. And then, Madam Chairman, just a couple of last things here. I have our superintendents' comments for our board meeting. Recently, this week, Pickens High School announced our star student and star teacher for the graduating class of 2025. The star student goes to the high school senior who has the highest SAT score on any single test date through November of their senior year, as well as being in the top ten percent of the graduating class. And so congratulations to senior Jeremy Westbrook, who was recognized as our star student for 2025. And once you're selected as a star student, you choose a star teacher. And Jeremy chose Christine Westbrook, who is a science teacher at PHS and also his mother. How cool is that? That is so awesome. So that is his star teacher, the star student and star teacher. Bangable will be held later this spring, and that's sponsored by our local Optimist Club. And then congratulations to all of our star student and teacher finalists from Pickens High School. The list is on the screen. Emma Christensen, whose teacher was Shelley Buck. Ashley Akin, whose teacher was Ginger Rosati. Diego Rivera, whose teacher was Kyle Rasko. Eva Stanley, whose teacher was Valerie Bone. Ada Keener, whose teacher was Jacqueline Powell. Zoe Kelly, whose teacher was Ted Estes. Grayson Leddington, whose teacher was Lynn Cantrell. Larry Flores Cardenas, whose teacher was Brian Alday. And then Ian Eagleson, whose teacher was Tanya Russo. Scholar, star student. And then also, congratulations to our Pickens Junior High School tennis team on an excellent fall. Our PJ Girls team finished its runner-up in the Mountain League Championship, and our PJ Boys team capped off an undefeated season by winning the Mountain League Championship. So congratulations again to these student athletes and coaches, Claire Eubanks and Jessica Long. And our high school basketball teams are currently in action and make up for actually a game that had been rescheduled from tomorrow night to tonight. They continue to have excellent seasons. Both squads are first in the region. Our Nets are currently ranked number five in AAA. Our Dragons are currently number three in AAA. An interesting tidbit, there are only three boys teams in our state undefeated at the moment, and our Dragons are one of them. So go Dragons, go Nets, keep it moving forward. And upcoming dates, of course, tomorrow, we're out of school, snow day because of the impending winter weather. On January 20th, it'd be a school holiday for Dr. Keen's birthday. And then February the 7th is our work session beginning at 1:00. And then February 13th is our regular board meeting. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to action items. First on our list is approval of the personal action report. Do I have a motion to approve the personal action report as presented?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Our next action item is approval of a senior tax exemption proposal. Dr. Thomas, do you wanna make some remarks here?
Yes, ma'am, I will. So we've been discussing this for several months. And currently, our senior tax exemption is twenty-five thousand dollars. That's the cap for any citizens in our community over the age of sixty-two. And again, we've been discussing this for quite a bit, and we have noted that this has been in place since nineteen ninety-seven. And so after several discussions, Madam Chair, we are proposing that we increase that amount from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand for our citizens who are over sixty-two. So that would be our proposal. And I would like to say to the community, this really helps those who need it the most with what we're doing. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the senior tax exemption proposal as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? For it? Is there?
Opposition.
Opposition? Moving on to approval of GMP with Carol Daniel Construction for the Pickens High School renovation project, Phase Two. Do I have a motion to approve the GMP with Carol Daniel Construction for Phase Two of the Pickens High School renovation project for the amount of seven million eight hundred eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars as presented?
So move. Shaggers.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh, no opposed. Approval of the change order with Carol Daniel Construction, PHS Fieldhouse. Do I have a motion to approve change order with Carol Daniel Construction for the Pickens High School Fieldhouse in the amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars forty cents as presented?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Right.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. And we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the following items contained in this consent agenda? We have some financial reports, minutes from the following board meetings, December the 12th, December the 12th, January 3rd. Surplus, which I believe is some furniture, and some books from PJHS, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have an out-of-state overnight field trip, PHS Honor Band, yay then, to UGA Janfest, PHS Swim Team to the state swim meet at Georgia Tech, PHS and PJHS FFA to the state livestock show in Cary, Georgia. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Bartra. Do I hear a second? And is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. And public participation, Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participations at this board meeting?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to board comments. Does anyone have a comment they would like to make?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that when I ran for the board four years ago, one of the main things that I ran on was increasing that twenty-five thousand dollar per year income on state tax. And so pleased we were able to finally get that done. That also needs to go to the Board of Commissioners for approval and then be on to the legislature, so that's not final. But we have done our part. And also, with the weather coming in, I want everybody to be safe, warm, well-fed, play up and be lazy for a day or two.
Madam Chair, I just want to say, as many people in the community know, we lost a student that's part of our junior high coming back to school, right before we came back to school. But on Monday, as we went back to school, we had our staff, we had local churches, local organizations that came in to support for that. And that was tremendous to see, all the community support that came out. So just want to say thank you to everybody that did that. I think the community responded in a great way for that. And so just note from the board that we appreciate that, and want to say thank you to you.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
Is there any further discussion? Now, you have a lot you want to talk down.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. So that's enough. All in favor? Five oh. We are adjourned at six thirty-seven PM.